Let's go ahead and get started this evening. Thank you, and welcome to the Fort Mill Town Council meeting for Monday, September the 11th. If you have a device that might interrupt our meeting or your presence at our meeting, please silence it so that we can give you our full attention. With that, we will stand for a pledge of allegiance and then an invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. This is a very solemn day for our country. I would like to take a moment for everyone to give prayers for the survivors of the 9/11 event and for the continued heroic actions of our first responders. Thank you for giving us a free country to live in and this community that surround us with love. Thank you for all things. Amen. Council members, you have received the minutes for the August 28th council meeting. Are there any changes, deletions, or additions?
I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
Have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Public comment. Pursuant to section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter. Welcome, except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. Citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Do we have anyone, Mr. Pettit, that signed in? All right. Then we're going to move directly into the presentation portion of our agenda this evening. Presentation number one, 2023 Decades Night, presentation, Jacana Hester. Hi, Jacana.
Hey, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. So Saturday, September the 23rd, we will be presenting our Decades Night at the Fort Mill Amphitheater at Walter Elijah Park, 345 North White Street, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:45 Beginning the evening, we will have Southside Saints. They will be doing a journey through the decades. This group plays various classic hits, covering musicians from The Police to Stevie Wonder. That's 6:00 to 7:30. And then following, we'll be showing a movie, which we, the community, voted on. We presented our community with several movies from the 80s and 90s and had them to vote on it on social media. And then we asked town staff to choose a team, 80s or 90s team. And then we flipped a coin at town hall to choose the winner, and our team 80s won. And so we will be showing Back to the Future. It's rated PG. It's about 116 minutes long, and so that will be 7:45 to 9:45 p.m. Then our food trucks for the evening, we have Toncho's Tacos, King of Fire, That Wine Truck, Charlie D's Seafood, Salute You, Crave, Jam Rock Jerks, Bop, Pona Ice, Happy Treats, Screaming Cold Treats, Popcorn Heaven, Hobbs' Nuts, and Nikki's Designs, and there's a couple more been added since then. But more artists and hobos and illumination wines, they will be offering beer and wine. And the Fort Mill History Museum will be doing ID checks and wristbands. And the prices are domestic, $6, craft, $7, and wine, $8. And cash and cards are accepted for the beer and wine. And then our food trucks, it's best to bring cash and card because some take one or the other. And then a site map for the event. Everything will be centrally located on the amphitheater side of the park with our food trucks along the sides. And then our movie screen will be kind of toward the middle of the park. Our road closure will be Arjory Street from 3:30 to 10:00 p.m., and this will be used only as a vendor's only entrance and exit. And then our parking for the event will be at Veterans Park, 106 North White Street, Calvin Street Park, 203 Calvin Street, Loon's Way, and then handicap parking will be behind the amphitheater. And then we ask the public to not park along any roadways around the park. And then we are, what to bring for the event? We have, bring your chairs or blankets, no coolers, no outside food, no outside drinks or alcohol. And because we don't know if it's going to be summer or fall on September the 23rd, we are still allowing you to bring water. And then we ask that our golf carts just please park in designated parking areas, no bicycles, no pets except for service animals, no smoking or vaping, no profanity, and no firearms or weapons. And tonight, we are seeking a resolution designating Walter Elijah Park on Saturday, September the 23rd, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:45 p.m. as the site of a public event in which alcoholic beverages may be sold, possessed, and consumed, and to authorize a special event permit for live music and sound amplifying equipment for this date and time. And all the details are in the resolution. And then, of course, follow Town of Fort Mill on social media to keep updated on all town information, and visit our town website at fortmillsc.gov.
Wonderful. Jacana, thank you. I think particularly in the last several of our events, the music has been spot-on for the crowd. Crowd has been very pleased. I've heard many compliments. And you're right, the weather certainly, it's a whiplash kind of area. But I do want to compliment you for the choices that are being made and the effort that goes into making these plans so that our community can enjoy the amphitheater. So thank you very much.
I appreciate our event's team.
And definitely, you do have a large team. Yeah, all of what, three? Yeah, we're grateful. We're grateful to all of you because without the planning that goes into this, it wouldn't happen well, and it has all turned out very well. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Jacana?
Jacana, how many more concerts do we have after this one?
Well, we'll have our Fort Mill Fall Festival, which will have some bands at that, and then our tree lighting will be in November and all the Christmas fun stuff.
So definitely winding down the series for concerts?
Yes.
Okay. Just when it gets comfortable.
Yeah.
Well, just stay put, and we will be very excited here. Presentation number two, the 2023 Scarecrow Call. Jacana, this has become a very signature event for the town and draws quite a bit of interest, so we're excited to hear about it.
Yes, so this will be our ninth annual scarecrow crawl, and we will be doing it from October the 6th through the 31st. Our registrations just ended last Friday, and Deanna has been busy putting all those into the spreadsheet. We have received more than we can handle, so we've had to create a waitlist for this. But we, the important dates to remember are installation will be September the 28th through October the 5th, and then the actual crawl will be the 6th through the 31st. And then we will have our South Carolina Strawberry Queens. They will be voting the week of October the 9th on specific categories for that. And then we invite the public to vote on their favorite scarecrows from the 6th through the 27th on our Town of Fort Mill Facebook page. And then we will announce all the winners on October the 30th on town social media. And then we ask all the entries to please remove your scarecrows on November the 1st and 2nd, so our Public Works Department does not have to do so. It helps them very much if they will clean up their own scarecrow. And this is just some pictures from last year. We have, every year, I think everybody gets more creative. It just does amazing things, so we're looking forward to it again. And this year, we will be going, we're bringing some down Tom Hall. It's been on Clayborne and Main, and then North and South White, but we do have a few that will be going down Tom Hall. And then we will continue in Millstone Park as well as Walter Elijah Park. And we did add a few down Academy, since we have more businesses down Academy this year.
Outstanding. I'm looking forward to it again. I agree with you, the creativity just never seems to peak. You know, it's something new and precious each time, so thanks to everyone that participates in that. Counsel, do you have any questions of Jacana?
My annual request, can we make sure that we encourage them to recycle as much as possible? I know a lot of times they're using bags to fill these.
Yes.
And we take those plastic bags and make park benches out of them. So if we can try to encourage that and help build a bench program from what's left over, that'd be great.
Yes, we will definitely, yes, encourage everyone. When I send out the emails, we'll encourage them to do that. But I also wanted to say, we are adding safety signage throughout the town as well, just to caution people to please be aware of the extra pedestrian traffic during the entire month of October. So we'll be doing these particular signs in the downtown area.
Jacana, I agree, this is like a signature event. I know a lot of people, not just in Fort Mill residents, but adjacent communities come to see it. And also, just great foot traffic for our downtown corridor, and it's just a great family event because you see people out walking and strollers, and the kids enjoy it. And it's just, it shows me how non-creative I've been on scarecrows. I couldn't make it happen. It's amazing.
Chris and I grew up door, next-door neighbors. We did, and we were not very creative.
We thought we were, but you just put us down.
Yeah, it was terrible.
But it's a great, it's a great event.
140, ever signed up to do it right now?
We might let a few more. We have close to 160 that are actually signed up, but we've got to cut it off. We got to talk Public, so Public Works tomorrow to see what they can, they can do for us.
Send them some cookies, so.
On the Tom Hall, like where you have Humble Coffee and the Market for Others, I mean, is that just limited? Are those multiple? I would imagine with the volume, there could be five or 10 at each of those locations or something like that?
Well, no. We're actually, Fort Mill Fire Department, they will put theirs in front of their location this year, and then our town hall, our administrative scarecrow will be in front of town hall. And then we actually have Vice Law that will be here that's not, they came in after I had created this. And then the Market and Humble Cup, and also Poppy Seed Kitchen will be in those locations.
Okay.
If you could fill in those voids, I think that's where Mr. Moody was talking about because it's going to be hard for me to walk away to Humble Cup just to see that one. So I think if you want to stick those other 20 you got in there somewhere, it would be great, but it's a great problem to have.
Yeah. And the coffee's worth the walk, so. Will there be a map out showing people, since it's growing, you're going to promote that, I'm sure, on social media that's more than just...
Yes, once we get everything finalized, we will have a map on the town website showing everything and promoted as well.
Okay. Awesome.
You had some posted, on some of the posts, I think I shared it, didn't you have some maps somewhere?
We do. We put sine canes out with the scarecrow route map.
Because I had people asking me, and I said, well, let's go look at that map over there, and they'll show you where it is.
There you go, yes.
I think it's wonderful because it eclipses more than just the main street. It has become an event that the entire town participates in. And when you look at the numbers and types of entries, it gets involvement from every aspect, so it's a wonderful event. Thank you.
And we even have keenly businesses that create scarecrows, so that's great.
Great. Awesome. And you just happened to be on the spot for presentation number three, 2023 Weekends on Main, Jacana Hester.
So this year, we are going to do two weekends, October the 6th through the 8th and October the 20th through the 22nd. The purpose of this closure is to provide a pedestrian-friendly atmosphere during the town's annual scarecrow crawl, and to provide a safer environment and walkability of Main Street in the surrounding areas during foot traffic during this event, and to provide an opportunity for all of our merchants in the closed-off area to expand their footprint outside of their location. So we ask permission from SC DOT to close the part of Main Street from Tom Hall to Academy, so that is the main area that will be closed from Fridays at 3:00 p.m. until Sundays at 10:00 p.m. on those two weekends only, the 6th through the 8th and the 20th through the 22nd. The downtown merchants have been contacted about this proposed closure, and the downtown co-op is working with merchants on promotions. And I know especially they're planning something for that kickoff weekend of scarecrow crawl of October the 6th through the 8th. And the merchants are allowed to expand their footprint outside to the area directly in front of their business. And we've received positive feedback from the majority of the merchants each year that we've done this. And again, that's Fridays at 3:00 p.m. through Sundays at 10:00 p.m. on October the 6th through the 8th and the 20th through the 22nd. And then the merchant guidelines, we ask them to set up directly in front of their business location only and to be considerate of their neighbors even if they are closed. If it's determined that more restaurants are needed, it's up to the merchants to supply their own. The town will supply trash roll carts, but ask merchants to monitor these during the weekend and refresh them as needed. And then we also have asked the merchants to coordinate music varieties together so that it complements all the merchants on Main and doesn't overpower each other. And then we also suggest to them that if they would like to have music to work together, to have one at the top, one at the bottom, or just to have one Main, one, so they're just not competing. And then for outside businesses, businesses on Main can offer their vendors in their designated space but are asked not to have any vendors that compete with any other Main Street business, and then to work together on the DoorDash Grubhub situation if they need to designate spaces for that. And then we also ask our merchants to share or tag Town of Fort Mill on their promotions, and we can share that on our social media. And then if they use tents, they must be properly weighted and follow our Fort Mill Fire Marshal guidelines. And the town provides our road closure, the barricades and cones for this, detour signage for traffic, roll carts. We have signage designating weekends on Main, and then we promote the actual closure on our town's social media. And then detours, we have specific detours if you are traveling on Sprat Street, and that's a map showing how that will run. And then if you are traveling west on Tom Hall Street or traveling east on White Street. And then tonight, we are seeking Town Council approval of a resolution for public alcohol sales, possession, and consumption during those two weekends only, from Fridays at 3:00 p.m. to Sundays at 10:00 p.m. This will allow patrons to be outside on the closed portion only with alcohol, and it will allow our merchants to sell their alcohol in those designated areas in their space if they are licensed to do so. And this is some pictures from last year. And again, follow Town of Fort Mill on social media for all the event updates and other information, and visit our town.
Jacana, again, I'm not sure anyone that enjoys the events completely understands the effort that goes into the events. We're very fortunate in Fort Mill to have a vibrant downtown. Grew up here, known it all my life, and this is the most active I've ever seen our Main Street. It's incredible. And I love that our merchants are willing to participate, but as you could see from the presentation, it requires a lot of support work from the town, so that isn't something that just happens. You don't just put the barriers up and let it go. There's a lot of work and coordination, and I really appreciate the efforts of staff to make these weekends successful and enjoyable by everyone. One of the pictures did have rain. The weighing of the tents, you know, again, this is a really odd weather culture here. We could have winds blow those over and harm people, so safety is our first concern. So we will have everyone do what is needed to ensure the safety of those that will come to visit our downtown weekends.
Jacana, have we worked with the merchants on Main to try to have at least drop-off parking or more temporary handicap parking at the back of the building since they can't park in front? I know that's one of the concerns we've heard from a few of the merchants.
Yes, we place additional handicap spots behind the barber shop area.
Okay. What about the other side of the street?
We have not placed any on that side.
Okay.
I'd have to consider that.
Yeah, maybe the history museum might would allow us to use some during that time. I know the cutting room, they mentioned that to me the last time we did this, that they basically had to shut down their business on Saturdays, which is the opposite of what we want to do because of some of the limitations with their patrons.
And I would think too, given that, just to tag on what you're doing, Hardee's is no longer operational, so I would like to make certain that we do whatever is necessary ahead of time to ensure that if they're going to allow parking, it's obvious where parking can occur. If they're not going to allow parking or have an insurance problem, they need to block that off for safety purposes. If you would please address that, that would be awesome.
Good point.
Thank you.
And the other concern that I had, Jacana's bossy Bueller, I talked to him this weekend, and they were talking about when you block off White Street, people getting into their business and their employees getting in and out.
Yes, yes, we will be meeting with them regarding the Strawberry Festival for next year. That's the only time we really do that, close North White Street and that area. And then also for safety, our police department worked last time, they had at our last event Tribute Fest, we wanted to monitor and see how the traffic flow was during that time. So they had an actual police car sit out there in the median during their event to monitor so we could see how that was going to work with our event. And we've also discussed putting this signage out during all of our events, just to remind people to slow down through that area because there was a lot of traffic that night as well as foot traffic.
Yeah, that's a new problem we have on White Street now.
Well, it's an evolving problem and a good problem to have, that we have new places for people to visit and enjoy. But I'd like for our public to understand that we are continually looking for resolution to better parking options. It isn't something that happens overnight. It isn't something that isn't without cost. So we are looking at what are the safest paths and the most optimal solution that we can find. I think publicly thanking the First Baptist Church for allowing public parking in their parking lot is long overdue. They have been more than a good citizen to everyone in Fort Mill to allow parking with easy access to Main Street for our events. So thank you, First Baptist.
They just repaved it too recently.
Looks good.
Jacana, I just want to, I'm not sure you covered this bullet in your presentation, I want to make sure the town has received positive feedback from the majority of merchants regarding closing Main Street. So you did follow up, you did get a majority, so I don't want to hear that I didn't know anything about it, and I know the co-op is working on it. So I understand everybody has different needs, but they were contacted and you received a majority of the merchants to do that.
Yes.
So I want to make sure that's stated.
And the communications for these events far exceeds what it was five or six years ago. We are doing a much, much better job with getting the information out repeatedly. And yeah, you have to look for it, but if you're interested, you should. So I'm just very, very happy that we are making this progress that we are.
Well done.
Yes, definitely well done.
As always.
Thank you, Jacana. All right. There are no old business items for this evening's agenda. We will move directly into new business item number one, 2023 Decades Night Resolution. This is what Jacana had presented previous, a resolution designating Walter Elijah Park, 345 North White Street on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023, from 6:00 p.m. until 9:45 p.m. as the site of a public event in which alcoholic beverages may be sold, possessed, and consumed, and to authorize a special event permit for live music and sound amplifying equipment on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023, 6:00 p.m. until 9:45 p.m. at Walter Elijah Park, 345 North White Street. Does anyone have any additional questions for Jacana on this item? Then I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve new business item number one.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you so much. New business item number two, 2023 Weekends on Main Resolution, a resolution designating Main Street, Tom Hall Street to Academy Street barricade zone as the site of a public event in which alcoholic beverages may be sold, possessed, and consumed on these weekends only, on Fridays 3:00 p.m. through Sundays at 10:00 p.m. October the 6th through the 8th, and October the 20th through the 22nd, 2023. Are there any additional questions required of Jacana on this request?
I'll make a motion to approve new business item number two.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you. New business item number three, public hearing and first reading. An ordinance to adopt the budget for the town of Fort Mill, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning October the 1st, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024. We will enter into the public hearing at this time. Does anyone have a need to address counsel on this item? Hearing none, the public meeting is hereby closed, and we will move into the first reading. Mr. Pettit.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of all the staff, it's my pleasure to present the fiscal year budget for 2023, Here we have an overview of just this fiscal year compared to last fiscal year. Our combined budget for all of our funds totals just shy of $73 million for this year, which is an increase of $18 million, 18.7, over the previous fiscal year. Just showing a breakdown of our various funds, showing general fund and gross revenue fund make up the vast majority of our budget, but we do have the stormwater fund as well as capital projects, and then a variety of special revenue funds that make up the additional funds there. Going into the general fund, the total projected revenues for the general fund for the next fiscal year are $31,534,360. This is about a $4.5 million increase from the previous fiscal year. Some of the contributing factors for that increase are property taxes increasing approximately $2.5 million, garbage fees going up over $300,000, business license over $200,000, and then a transfer from the American Rescue Fund, the ARP funds, of over $800,000. Those are all contributing to that $4.5 million increase, among other things. The millage rate for the next fiscal year is set at 85.7 mils. That's compared to the millage rate for this year of 79.2. And we have a graph here showing just the history of the millage rate in Fort Mill for the last good number of years. Some of the expenditure highlights in the general fund. And again, the general fund is where most of our town operations outside of utilities occur, so police, fire, administration, things of that nature, Public Works. As with all of our funds, the expenditures are balanced with our projected revenues. Some of the highlights in this year's budget, we do have 19 new full-time positions. As for in the budget, we have updated our salary study. We completed a salary study in 2019 as recommended by our consultants. We had completed an update this year, and again, that looks at all of our positions and the market rate for those positions and brings those, completes a study to put us in a position to where we are marketable in our various positions in the market. So we've completed that and are proposing to update, or excuse me, implement that in the budget. Some vehicles, we have a new garbage truck as well as one replacement, that's over $870,000. We have 10 police vehicles, some new, some replacement, over $800,000. Just garbage and recycling fees are going up across the board. Garbage, $560,000, over $560,000, recycling, over $525,000. The cost of garbage and recycling is just increasing significantly, so you can see that here, as those are some of our largest expenditures. Some additional ones, we have a downtown mobility plan that we actually discussed at the previous meeting with Fort Mill Economic Partners at $160,000. That is anticipated to be refunded to us in a grant. We also have a new comprehensive plan coming in at $150,000, as well as an update to our impact fee study, as the state requires us to update that every five years. So we are looking to get started with that this year, so that would be coming in at $65,000. Those are just some of the many highlights of the general fund. Moving on into the gross revenue fund, that fund is coming in at a little over $20.8 million, which is an increase of just shy of $4 million from previous fiscal year. Some things of note for that revenue, almost $1 million is coming additionally from water and sewer sales, that's a million dollar increase. No, excuse me, that's a million dollars total. We do have grants, and this is the bulk of the increase here, grants to a tune of over $2.4 million in our gross revenue fund that are showing up in that revenue. So that's a lot of state and federal money, whether that's ARP money through the feds or the state's skip program, which is... which is the state's allotment of ARP money, uh, that they've created a grant program. Uh, as well as I think we have a rural infrastructure authority grant in there as well. So, um, we've done a lot with grant funds in the gross revenue fund for this upcoming fiscal year. As in keeping with our rate projections, we have increased the fees for water and sewer at 7.5%. Uh, again, with expenditures, they are balanced with projected revenues. Uh, again, implementing the salary study across the board with all of our departments. And again, uh, the bulk of some of our biggest projects for this upcoming fiscal year is our grant funded projects. So we have, uh, through the skip program with the state, a new water line going down Fort Mill Parkway, connecting Holbrook to Tom Hall Street. Uh, the portion for this upcoming year is comes in at 1.3 million. Uh, we do have a back truck. Um, we currently have a back truck that's just, uh, in need of replacement. Uh, so that comes into the tune of 600,000. But, uh, the following RT Street Pump Station, Northern Pump Station and Sprat Street Waterline Replacement. Uh, those are all grant funded projects, um, that we've secured through either REA or, uh, the skip program through the state. Moving on to Stormwater Utility Fund. Projected revenues just north of 1.2 million. Uh, this is an increase of almost 200,000 dollars from the previous fiscal year. Again, uh, expenditures are balanced with the revenues. Uh, some items of note here, again, implementation of the salary study as well as a stormwater fee rate study. Uh, the last rate study was completed in 2007, so it's certainly time to review that. So that's comes to the tune of $80,000 for the stormwater fund. Capital Projects Fund. Uh, projected revenues for the Capital Projects Fund are just north of 14 million dollars. This is an increase of almost 7.8 million dollars over the previous fiscal year. And the biggest thing to note here, um, as was discussed in several meetings, the town was awarded 25 million dollars uh, as allocated in the state budget for completion of a new operations center. And so the budget does include 8 million dollars in planned revenue and expenditure for that. So, uh, the vast majority, if not all, the increase in the Capital Projects Fund revenues is accounted for in that 8 million dollars. Some of the highlighted expenditures, uh, we've got some items to complete at Banks Athletic Park, uh, coming in at a tune of a million dollars. Uh, we proposing a Main Street lighting replacement at 500,000. We have a C Mac project, which is a grant project to complete a sidewalk on White Street.
White's Road.
White's Road, excuse me. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, White's Road, um, that will connect the Waterside and Pecan Ridge subdivisions to the schools there as well as Dominion Bridge. Um, and our, our local match for that is 100,000. Uh, Lanclaring and Breeze Site, purchase of a property there for 300. Uh, continued investment into the YMCA facility at 500,000 dollars. The completion of the tennis and the pickleball project that we started this fiscal year, uh, comes in at 750,000. Um, the town completed a facility study that looked at all of our facilities and some maintenance and upgrades that we could complete. So, uh, we've budgeted for that at the tune of 2.5 million. And then again, as discussed, the operations center, um, which will be a multi-year project. But the state allocated 25 million and we are anticipating spending 8 million this fiscal year towards that project. Special revenue funds, these are just a variety of our other special revenue funds, uh, that are restricted monies. Accommodation tax, fire, impact fee, municipal services, uh, impact fee recreation, partial recreation, impact fee as well as hospitality tax. You'll see revenues and anticipated expenditures are balanced for all of those funds. And with that, Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions. If anyone would like to see a full copy of the budget, they can do so either on our website or come visit us at Town Hall. And if anybody has any questions, they can feel free to give us a call as well.
Excellent summary. Thank you so much. And I would also like to thank you for a much more thorough presentation in our booklets. Uh, it is understandable. It's simple. It's clear and we haven't had the luxury of that in a while. So this is, uh, this is a really good step forward as we began to address the things that are long overdue to be addressed. I do think it's important to remind the public that we did hire a third party with expertise to review our facilities so that we weren't just making a decision on what should or shouldn't happen. So we hired a third party firm that brought in engineers and construction and maintenance expert, experts to look at our facilities and tell us what needed to be done because we all know that delayed maintenance costs far more on the tail end of things. Thrilled to get the 25 million from the state of South Carolina to assist us with a new operations facility. And very happy with the town for securing property and paying for that so that we can make this a reality for our employees and our community. So I do think that there is a great deal of work in this particular budget that looks a little different to me than it has in years past. We are having to be more and more competitive with our employee salaries. Um, we are sandwiched between much larger areas and our good employees get picked away. And, and we love our employees. We would like to keep the benefit of the employees that make Fort Mill wonderful. So we have had to look at that with salary study and the competitive comparisons that we make with other areas. We're investing in Fort Mill because it's worth it. We are looking at Fort Mill as our home and our community. And I am very proud of the steps this council has taken, uh, to move us forward with not just maintaining, but preserving the community as we all know it. So, uh, thank you, council members, for taking the hard steps to do what is necessary and staff for working to give us the information that allows us to make those decisions.
As you mentioned, not counting the time that we haven't spent, but staff, but then all together as a council. By rough math, I think we've got over 100 hours in the time that's spent together collectively, getting information together, going through dialogue, weighing out choices, trying to make these decisions so they're not taken, taken lightheartedly. I mean, taken very seriously. There's been a lot of dialogue and, you know, a lot of constructive dialogue, but, you know, real talk. And I think what we've gotten here is a fine piece and it's a, it's definitely in the best interest of the town. I feel like it's really well done.
Our town has grown, just not inside the house, and we are taking care of that to ensure that we can continue the level of service that our community expects from us. So I'm grateful, um, guys. It's been hard steps and hard work, but you've been there every step of the way and I appreciate each of you.
Yeah, I think this budget, in the eight years I've been on town council, sets this town on a path forward that it probably has not had in the past. We've grown a lot, um, but the long-term facilities plan, the strategic thinking that you guys all I sit with have done to really get on board with that. And, um, the land acquisition was a big step and that, that was a big strategic decision. Forward thinking, futuristic decision of like how, what can, how much land will we need and how long will that last us? And, I mean, for decades, uh, and that to bank that land, as rare as land is, especially in these parks, uh, was, was a great strategic decision. Um, I just have a couple of questions really, Chris, and I'm not going to keep everyone. Um, when we were just looking at the trend lines for the impact fees, how do you, for each bucket, fire, muni, parts and wreck, you just kind of try to take the two prior years and, and see how that, I was looking around page 36. So we need to choose one. I was just 36, 37.
Thank you.
For like fire.
Yeah, as far as revenues, we, we do our best to look at residential development because that's the easiest for us to kind of project out, uh, and take our best guess of what that's going to be. And then use that to project the impact fees. Commercials hit or miss. You know, we'll, we'll start talking about a commercial project. It may or may not happen. So we don't really use that for our projections. And, uh, we're very conservative in how we utilize our, um, impact fee monies. We don't, uh, we don't ever use, uh, project to use the money or budget to use the money until we actually have it. So, you know, the, the projections are, are good and we try and do our best on those. But until it's in our, you know, coffers, we don't actually think about spending it. So, um, we, we do our best, but sometimes we, we far exceed it and that's, you know, good commercial years, uh, we will far exceed it. But, uh, that's kind of how we do that.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
When it comes to our own capital projects that we use for impact fees, when can we plan on or expect to see that project list get updated?
Plan, uh, plan to bring that to you for a first reading at the next, um, uh, meeting, which will be the 20... Uh, so at our next council meeting, we'll have first reading of an updated CIP. Uh, we will also be, uh, as I mentioned, updating our impact fee study this year and we'll be updating the CIP alongside that as well.
25th.
25th, excuse me. Uh, so, uh, we'll have this opportunity here to put some projects on that, that we have going on now. And, uh, then another opportunity later in the year, uh, as we update the impact fee study and CIP as well.
Thank you.
That'll be updated in county year this year or fiscal year?
It'll be within the fiscal year.
Right, right. So this is just a question I had. Well, now that we have received the monies from the state, will we still leave the public works facility on the CIP since that has been, will we, can we use impact fee money that's on there now from last I saw, but we really aren't going to need, I mean, we have the cost to cover it or the revenues to cover the cost, excuse me. So, I mean, will that remain, envision that remaining on there?
So, and we had utilized, um, we had utilized some impact fee money to pay for a portion of that property.
Okay, alright, so it'll stay.
So, um, you know, it, it has the ability to stay on there, you know. At this point in time, we know that we're going to receive 25 million dollars from the state. It may be a 30 million dollar project. It may be a 25 million dollar project. So, you know, it gives us flexibility to utilize those funds, keeping it on there. So, um, for the purpose of the flexibility, I would recommend that it stay on.
Okay. Just to curious question I had.
And with the building being the historic registry building, we'll need to spend some effort and dollars cutting in and fixing that up as well. So.
Can't do that. And you're right. We can't do that until we have a building to move into. But to your point and your point, there, for the public's understanding, impact fees have a great deal of structure in how we collect and can use them. They can only be used for certain things. They also have a sunset. If we don't use them in the prescribed period of time, we have to return them. So we do plan accordingly. It's like with the 25 million from the state, we will plan to that. But with everything else since the blasted pandemic, the price gauges are just astronomical with their double the cost. So what we do is prepare to absorb anything that's needed to do the project well and to do it well. Then Lisa, you are correct. That is a national historic designated site. We will have to take our time. It will have to be done exactly as they prescribe it to be. And it will be done as we are able to fund it and make those changes. So good job.
Chris, one of the questions that I would like a little bit more clarity with our budget is just our contingency for cost of projects or items in here that may end up coming in higher than expected, given the way inflation is and us trying to budget for us. Did we increase more than we typically do for that contingency? Or how do you feel we're positioned with that?
Certainly since the pandemic and since the craze of costs just going up and up and up with, uh, you know, every day. Uh, we, we've been more aggressive in, in our percentage increases that we've done. So we may get a quote in at 500 and, and certainly throw in 10 or 15 extra percent to accommodate for the what-if of, you know, what may happen between now and when we actually procure it. So, uh, we have boosted that a little bit and I feel good about, uh, all our staff and them doing that for the big projects.
And we do have some items on here, just for clarity, that are projects or purchases that we tried to make in this fiscal year and were unable to. So it's shifted over, um, because of supply and demand issues that are still out there.
And there's going to be, uh, to your point, there's going to be some in this year's budget that won't, we won't actually receive until next year. You know, the garbage vehicles, uh, those are, I think, a 15-month turnaround. So we'll purchase them and pay for them so that we can lock in our, our fee now. Uh, so as to not, you know, have to pay more later, but, uh, we won't receive those for 15 months plus or minus.
Mr. Pett, I think some great work's been done. As Mr. Tadz has mentioned, I think we've made some strategic strides and, and also tried to do some repairs and some, uh, new facilities which are, uh, very needed. The, uh, I just want to kind of look at this from the outside in without knowing all the numbers. One of the first slides you had showed a lot of increases, uh, in income. And I just want to state, a lot of this new homes based on it, and there's also expenditures go off of that. So 2 million dollars didn't just pop up because we increased the fee or 10 million dollars or whatever it is. Those are based on growth, new neighborhoods and all that. Kind of goes along with, uh, Mr. Moody's question about impact fees. So a lot of that is focused on growth. And people say, oh, well, you're getting all this extra money. No, the expenditure is usually out or higher than the revenue coming in. So I just wanted to be clear that, because you do a quick, that's a great summary, but a lot of details get lost in that summary.
And exactly to your point, um, you know, something else that is, is really big this year, particularly in our budget is just the, the grant funding. It's something that's, it's certainly been in other budgets, but not to the extent that it is now. I mean, millions and millions and millions of dollars. So I think all of our budgets almost have been impacted in a positive way, uh, from grant funding. So they're all boosted from things like that, which our staff has done a good job of.
We talk about the Armory as a historic building and hopefully we'll be able to find some grants for that. But we can't do anything till we get the new operations center, which I can't wait till we get started. Uh, cause that's just going to be a game changer and open up a lot of opportunities for other facilities. So, and they're going to congratulate staff and the council on getting that facilities project done to know we have a baseline now. And then we can figure out what do we need. And it's not just buildings. Yes, we have some pretty significant money stated for the parks. We're going to make some enhancements to some of the parks that have been kind of orphaned. Uh, so they're going to get some love. There's some great projects in there. I think it was a very balanced, uh, slate of, of projects we've put forward and budgeted. So thank you for everybody's hard work in putting that together and look forward to, I hate to say move Fort Mill forward because I think that was a term years ago.
We already used that.
But, uh, but I think a lot of these things in a tough environment, you know, we've made some tough decisions. And I think of the first, the current, the First Baptist Sanctuary, not the newer one, the older one, was built during the depression. And so that's, that's kind of, you know, you've got to make tough decisions during tough times. But you look at it now and you go, oh, that's a great, been a great, you know, feature for that church. Well, they built it during the depression.
On the backs of a lot of people that worked in our mills.
Exactly.
I, I think it's, to your point, Mr. Wolf, the amount of progress that we're seeing for our town and our staff and our community with this budget exceeds any of them, I think, probably put together. I think we've tried the Band-Aid for way too many years. And it really is starting to cost us more because of the Band-Aid rather than looking forward and trying to really make something significant and make it to where it'll last for us for many years. So making decisions not only for what we feel like we need, but for our staff, making sure that we're providing them with a safe workplace is a big deal. And public works is really the forefront of that. But also for our office staff too. I mean, we're looking at HVAC systems where we know we have some concerns in buildings and it's long overdue. But we can do that because of all the effort staff's put into a lot of the grants. Yeah, found money helps us make our money go a lot further. So, yeah, it's in small print in this book, but the amount of grant money that's coming out of here is amazing. And you and I talked right before the meeting a little bit about the hometown economic grants. You mentioned to me that some of these projects that are in here that we'll also look and see if we might can apply for that. I hope we will. I think we've got some projects that are worthy of it. So hopefully those putting out the grants will see that we need it too and spread some love our way as well. And, um, the 25 million, it's worth at least bringing up Ray Felder's name. She really spearheaded that project for us at the state level and there's no way we could have done that without her. So the partnership that she continues to do for our town needs to go noted. She made a huge difference that we've never seen before at the state level. So, Ms. Ray, if you're listening, thank you very much.
Quite a champion for this community.
Yes.
Quite a champion.
One last question, Mr. Pett. So I know we have to go through second reading to make this. So you mentioned this would be available online. So when would the public pass questions? When would it be available?
Uh, we'll put it up tomorrow.
Even as preliminary, okay.
That takes care of that opportunity that we would need to make any.
That takes care of that opportunity that we would need to make any potential change.
Perfect.
All right. Any further questions, comments? All right. Um, I believe as this was a resolution, we're going to need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve new business item number three.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. New business item number four, public hearing and first reading, an ordinance to raise revenue by setting the tax mileage for the town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, excuse me, for the tax year ending December 31st, 2023, and for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024. We will open the public hearing at this time. Does anyone have need to make comment? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. And we will go into the first reading, Chris, if you would like, Mr. Pett, if you would like to guide us through.
Mayor, this is, um, this is just your formal ordinance that will set the tax mileage at 85.7 mils.
Okay.
Happy answering questions.
I think it's terribly important, as a long-term resident of Fort Mill, that we continually bring to mind that we have gone many, many years without raising taxes. It isn't as if in all of those years, our costs did not increase, or that we chose to not do work that we likely should have. So I think it's also incredibly important, not being an accountant, by the way, if I have more checks in my checkbook, I think I got more money. But I think it's important to note that there's a difference in restricted funds and in the funds that we collect that are one-time funds, and then the collected funds that go to provide for operations. And as we look at operations, you know, we may or may not have a need to raise taxes, but those operations are costing more every day for every household, for every item in that household. It is not something that's unique to you and I, it is something that the town shares in as we work to manage and be fiscally responsible for each and every one of our citizens. And I do believe that we have all but just come to grips with how to make this work the best that we can and prevent future costs from being so large for the town. So I think it's important not to just see that it's a tax increase, but that it's something that we can't operate effectively without doing the work for the town that's required of us.
Also, when you see the dip in the millages that we had the last couple of years, really that was around, favorite word, the pandemic, and trying to make sure that we were protecting our citizens as much as possible. We weren't spending as much because we couldn't get anything. So, you know, it kind of was a reset, and this is getting us back to what our basic standards were for many years before that. So, um, I think we've done, we've been very frugal, we've been very mindful, but we've also realized that, um, things keep going up, and we have to be sure that we're taking care of, um, our employees, the salaries on here is a big piece of it, and the personnel. So we want to be sure our staff understands how much we believe in appreciating them.
And everything's going up, and then just fuel costs along. I mean, operational costs, to Chris Wolf's point, that for every home that comes online, there's an associated cost with servicing that home. And so it's just one thing to be mindful of with all of this.
Yeah, and that's a good point, and, and there you go, I want to emphasize what you said, frugal. We, I mean, we, we debated, let me just say that. We debated honestly on what we had to do, but there's 10 new, there's six new police officers, I believe, on there, and so the question is, why do we need six police officers? Well, we've got 200 new homes coming on, and we've got new neighborhoods, so we have to be able to have staff for those. So it's a, it's a fine line, it's like making sausage, it's kind of, you don't like to see sausage made, but you enjoy the sausage. But we have to have these, have to have another garbage truck, because we've got more homes. So a lot of that's based on that, so they're, we use data and metrics where possible, and, and, and some just good old honest, just trying to figure out what we need, but our, I think this budget has stopped kicking the can down the road for, so I think we are starting to address some of those things.
I think it's important, too, to note that not all growth and need for additional funding is related to homes. We have been extremely blessed to be a site that new businesses want to come and join our community. Those new businesses come at a cost. Everyone has to pay for the opportunity to have those new businesses. The growth surrounding Fort Mill comes at a cost. When you look at the small community of Indianland, it's not small anymore, there's over 47,000 people in Indianland. Those costs are incurred by us as people come through and to our community, they're not just new houses. This council, in my last several years, has turned down numerous opportunities for new housing developments. We've turned them down. We have taken steps to make better density requirements and more traffic analysis. So it's not just homes, everything has increased in cost and increased in our opportunities. So I just want to make that crystal clear, it's not just housing.
I think about 47,000 come through here.
Every day.
And to your point, Mayor, about steps, it's not long after you took office, we changed our five zoning to our eight to make bigger lot sizes. We started requiring developers to do traffic impact analysis prior to coming before us, so we would know and could make informed decisions. So we have taken a lot of steps, and, and to your point, I mean, growth is not always bad. I know y'all have heard me say this for eight years.
Oh, no, not Dylan.
But I came from a podunk little town, I'm not going to say the name to how he said it, but, um, but it, it is a good thing to have. I mean, I always say, coming from the other side of it, a lot of people come to Fort Mill and don't know how blessed, there's a lot of towns in this state that would love to have our Main Street, and will love to have all the luxuries we have. I mean, it's awesome, and, uh, so that's my podunk plug for this year.
Your Dylan plug. Well, and it's important on the police officers, too, to remember part of that is the SRO need at our schools, and that's just a change of the environment, honestly, and the expectations that we have for our students and our children. And that's something, if you're interested, please apply, we need more SROs. Um, that's your plug, Zachary. But, yeah, that's important, and that's what we expect out of our schools. That's how we have top-notch schools, is that we're in a safe environment. So, um, it all works together really well, and, and I definitely feel like this council and staff have worked hard to make the best decision for our town, given the situation we're in.
Agreed. With that, I believe we're, do you have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve new business item number four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for new business item number four. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. There are no information discussion items for this evening, and there are no executive session items. So with that, Mr. Hudgens, I know that, um, your voice has been waning from head cold, but do you have anything for the good of the whole?
I was kind of struck first thing this morning, I mean, nine eleven, everybody but one, well, that young lady left, but everybody in this building, or in this room, went through that. My takeaway from that was the kindness, the patriotism and the unity that we all felt the day after. And it was like, I don't care who you are, how far away you are, what you need, what color you are, what race you are, whatever, you got it, we're working together. And it's kind of disappointing to see it drift away from that. And there's no magic tool to make it happen, I don't want to see anything catastrophic like that happen, or brought it to us, but just a point to ponder, you know, how did I feel, what made me feel that way? You know, why don't I go back to feeling that way for all of us to, to be kind? I mean, we brought that up many, many times, it does take a lot. It's not hard to do. Just be, be a good human, be, be kind. Let, let today maybe be a little jumpstart of that, you know, feel that gut feeling you did when everybody was scrapping for American flags, working on get one, people were making them out of pins and coloring them on paper and sticking them in the windows. I mean, it was red, white and blue USA and everywhere, and I just, I feel like we've kind of drifted from, we've kind of forgotten about it. I would challenge everybody to check their patriotism, you know, check their kindness, check their, uh, willingness to, to unite with others, I guess, and that was, that was kind of my takeaway, that hit me first thing this morning, but, um, again, to commend the town for all the work to get grants, I mean, we touched on that already, that is huge, the amount of dollars that, you know, are there that have been worked hard for, for research and dug out and, and found for every department across the town, and I commend all the employees and everybody who was involved in that. That's really, really a big deal, a lot more than I think the public may quite understand.
Agreed.
I'm going to stop while I still can.
Thank you. Mr. Moody?
I would say I'm honored and blessed to sit in Alan Garrison's chair tonight, wish he was here, uh, hope he feels better. I'm glad I got to sit with you guys, I won't do it ever again, I promise. I'm just kidding, but, uh, this is a great budget, as we already talked about, I'm really excited about the events we discussed earlier tonight, and for the fall, I'm just kind of ready for the fall weather to kind of kick in at this point. I'm hoping that God smiles on my Gamecock Saturday, and that they'll be able to score three points against Georgia, and that's all I have.
I'm glad you're rubbing off some Gamecock love in that Alabama chair right now, so, yeah, I appreciate it. So I did attend the Catawba Ridge and Audrey Kael football game on Friday night, it was at Audrey Kael, but it really was a neat, um, recognition honoring our heroes of the military, um, our first responders, they had parachutists come in with the flag, they had a helicopter go over, they really put it out there. It was, um, a very neat, touching event, gives me cold chills thinking about it again. Unfortunately, our team didn't come out on the winning side of it, but it still was very neat to see at a football game, everybody coming together and celebrating the country we live in. Also participated in a 5K out at Fort Mill High School on Saturday, that was, remember our heroes also, um, regarding, uh, first responders and everything with 9/11, remembering those that we've lost. And I will say, I think that was a great location to do a 5K, because we didn't have to worry about traffic, we didn't have to cut, shut off any of the roads, um, there was a great turnout, and they easily could have handled triple the amount of crowd. So hopefully this is an event, this was their first time doing it, and I know they're planning on doing more, but they put on a top-notch, um, event, so just for what it's worth. Also, telling my age real quick, we had a class reunion, I'm not going to say what year, on Saturday night, and I appreciate all the people from Fort Mill High that came out, and yes, I'm younger than Ben, um, that came out to celebrate, um, many years of friendships. It's funny how so many have not changed one bit at all, I think I recognize all but maybe one or two, and once they said who it was, I was like, oh, yeah, I definitely see it. But it was great seeing the love for many generations, um, you know, of not seeing each other, and sometimes we do. It was great to have them back, but what was even better was, as we were promoting, bringing everybody in town, I had things to talk about. So I was feeding them with, if you've not been to Fort Mill in a while, Saturday we'll have the farmer's market going on, go visit it. Or if you're looking for dinner before our event, go to Main Street, or go to Kingsley, we've got a lot of new restaurants in town. So it was great to have something more to talk about, and I appreciate what all our staff does to make it real easy to share a Facebook post of the events going on in town. So thank you, guys, I know you're still sitting in the back, so I appreciate it, and we'll keep promoting that. Um, and then lastly, thank you staff for finding more money, so I appreciate the follow-up on the lead I gave you. Good Morning America did a blurb one morning about money that's out there that people haven't claimed, and it's just, you know, companies that had shut down, or checking accounts you forgot about, or really random stuff. Wasn't much, but we got, what, almost $8,000, I think, that we didn't know that was out there by trying and seeing, and then, um, there was a couple more that we're trying to get. So just so everybody who's watching knows, we try to get every dime we can, so appreciate the help and the follow-up on that project. That's all for me.
All right. Mr. Hammonds?
I'm good.
Mr. Wolf?
I'll kind of follow up with Mr. Hudgens, you know, today's the 22nd anniversary of 9/11, and it brings back memories of that day and the following weeks. We'll never forget those who were lost, survivors whose lives were forever changed, and the courage demonstrated by first responders and everyday heroes. The upcoming, the events presented tonight was one of many representations of our community, and want to thank our event staff for putting all their hard work and coordinating these. And, and these events are not simply for entertainment, but also to help grow our community, opportunities for our residents to celebrate, meet, mingle new acquaintance and neighbors. And this, this enhances and grows our community, our Fort Mill. And I think all these together, we, we council members mention many nights how we feel blessed to live in Fort Mill.
Absolutely.
And, and when events like 9/11 or other tragic world events occur, it really drives that point home. And, uh, and let us always work to what, work what, on what unites us and not what divides us. And I think that's important, and I think it, you know, it's kind of, I hate to kind of take 9/11 and move it into events, but I think that's what helps us grow together, get to know your neighbors, get involved in the community, serve on volunteer boards, do those types of things, because we're all in this together, that's all we got, we got each other.
Thank you, well said. I too, um, a little, I don't know what's the right word, but I also remember the good that came from 9/11. And there is, it's really hard to even say it that way, but after 9/11, those of you that are here, we gathered in the back parking lot back here at the First Baptist Church as an entire community. It was incredible how many people didn't know each other, but gathered hands, made big circles and said prayers for our first responders and our veterans and our military that were re-engaging in something we really didn't know. I never dreamed I would have anything to talk about like my grandparents did, the Depression, Pearl Harbor, I thought, eh, we're just living a charmed life, and then here comes 9/11, and then the pandemic, and I got to be honest with you guys, I liked it better when I was naive. You know, it was just different, but from that comes a sense of, of community and a sense of responsibility. So Chipper, I know you're back there, and Brian, I know you're back there, there's not a day that goes by that I'm not grateful for you and your staff. It, you know me, I get all teary about it, because I see you guys day in and day out, rush towards a problem, rush towards the danger. It's not uncommon, it's every day, for our Public Works folks that check on people and look out for things. I am so grateful for the people that work for our town and make it what it is, so thank you. You might have noticed lately that we have quite a few large trees that are dying and are falling a limb at a time. So I have asked staff and spoken with council, we must come up with a tree replacement program where we work with people to begin planting the next legacy trees, because guys, trees don't last forever, and especially not in this weather. So we, we must move towards that, because I've seen several on our, in the center of town that I never dreamed would fall down, but they are. Been by the tennis courts, and I'd like to really give a public thank you to Chris. We've struggled with some of the contract work that had been hired and working on the tennis courts and the pickleball courts that we were adding, and I want to thank you, you have given undivided attention when needed to securing the right people to make the difference that it's actually moving forward, and I couldn't be happier and prouder to say that that's going to be really wonderful when it's complete, so thank you. You, you did a great job with that, and I am, I am personally grateful for that, thank you. Um, litter, great God almighty, if everybody's still on tape here, stop letting stuff fly at the back of your truck, stop throwing stuff out the windows. I am, it's incredible, the mess that people make of our beautiful town. I don't like it, I'm not shy about it, I saw cardboard on Tom Hall Street today, big pieces of cardboard, between Humble Coffee and the, the brewery in the middle of the road, and you know that didn't just happen, you know? Please secure, if you're going to take stuff to the recycle center, secure it. Make sure it's not flying out towards another vehicle or laying on the road. Our public utilities folks have worked tirelessly in heat that has not been seen before. It is unfair to them for us to not be careful with our litter, I'm just telling you, I want that. It hurts stormwater drains, it hurts the look of the community, it's a terrible, terrible situation that we're all responsible for. So stop with the litter, please, just stop it. Lastly, um, we do a lot of work, thankfully, for the staff on the back row that gets it out on the computer and gets it out on Facebook, everything, but we rarely remember the guy that's over in a room outside of us, Tony McMahon. Tony is our videographer, and without Tony, we wouldn't have the, the beautiful videos of our events and our council meetings for people that can't get here, for whatever reason. Tony does a fabulous job, a wonderful job, with every question and every need we have. So Tony, I know you can hear me, so thank you, thank you so much for what you do, yeah, hello, Tony. Thank you for what you do for our community. Virginia, thank you.
Virginia, thank you, Eric, all of our staff, thank you, thank you for what you do. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for us to go home and watch some football.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second. Have a motion to adjourn in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, have a good evening.